Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our regular meeting for Monday, January ninth. A belated Happy New Year to all of those here and who are joining us online. Firstly, I have a question to the clerk. Am I looking in the right way? I'd asked in the past when we first had our meeting about having the National Anthem at our meetings. And I'd like to know if we can have a National Anthem at this meeting.
Few, Mr. Mayor, as per your request, I was put on under other businesses, mayor requested.
Sure. Sorry.
As mayor requested procedural bylaw amendments, we do not have Oh Canada queued up and ready to go at this point in time. If we get direction, we can do that in the future.
I've given the direction and I'd like it in the future. For the year 2023 of our Lord, I'd like to have the National Anthem at our meetings. I hope the council is okay with that. I think it's an important thing that we have. Counselor Watson?
Yeah, I totally agree.
Okay. Any questions on that, folks? Okay, moving forward, disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof. Anyone have any disclosure? Great. Adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting. Can I get a mover Deputy Mayor Noble and a second or Counselor Morgan? If you'd like to read that for us, Ms. Wilson?
Motion reads Mayor Sloan. Moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that the minutes of the inaugural meeting of council dated Monday, December the fifth, 2022, and the regular meeting of council dated Monday, December the 12th, 2022 be adopted.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor? Call the vote, sorry.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors? Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving right along, we don't have any delegations this evening, I can see, and I don't think there are any online. With respect to correspondence, items requiring auction. Number one is Cobblestone House Heritage Designation. I'm not sure we've, who's had the chance to take a look at it, but I, I've read with great interest and see that former Mayor Martin is involved. I think that she continues to do great work, specifically with the heritage here in Central Elgin and throughout Elgin County. And I'm, I'm very interested and pleased that this has come forward for us to, to discuss. And I asked the council if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none. Could I ask the clerk to read for us the motion? Sorry. I need a mover and a second or? Oh, a mover. With the Counselor Bachman and a second or Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report HSC 80123 re-designation of Cobblestone House, house be received as information, and that council approved the designation for the entire exterior of building excluding the two closed-in extensions on the north and south sides of the east gable as requested by the property owner Grant McDonald and recommended by Heritage Central Elgin.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan.
Yes, well, thanks to Mr. McDonald and former Mayor Martin. Received for information. Do we go through these individually, Ms. Wilson?
The motion is to take it collectively proceeding. Mayor Sloan?
Those who've taken a look, are there any questions before we ask for a mover and a second or does anyone have any comments or questions on the information we have received thus far? Seeing none. Can I get a mover, please? Counselor Connors and a second or Counselor Halpin?
Motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin. Correspondence items number one through number seven inclusive be received as information and filed.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan.
Yes, thank you. Central Elgin Planning Office, no reports. We move now to the Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Shipway. Did you wish to speak to this, Mr. Shipway?
No, sir. I through you, Mr. Mayor, I have some questions and concerns about this.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. The floor is yours.
So a few of the, the questions or the concerns that I have. Number three. Even if there are times when the municipal, municipal website is not accessible to the public, that there won't be an extension of notice. I don't think that's fair to the public that if they are not able to, there are times when they're not able to access information on our website, that it shouldn't be overlooked and they should have additional time to review any documentation.
Mr. Shipway?
To you, Mr. Mayor, the, this is just really a cleanup of the existing bylaw. There's nominal changes from the one that exists other than to add some transparency to it. That's a tool in the event that the website goes down, it doesn't vide the entire process. I think within here, there's also some discretion that if, if there needs to be administrative changes to extend it, that would happen. The, the intent is just not to blow up an entire notice if the website goes down for half an hour or something to that effect. Obviously, we'd, we'd use common sense to extend if there was some additional issue.
And through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that it, it needs to be written that there, if there are periods of time, it needs to be written in this bylaw that if there are periods of time that information is not accessible, that notice will be extended for that period of time. Rather than just leaving it to a judgment call.
Mr. Shipway?
Whatever the direction of council will obviously do.
If you could just give us the calls notes, Mr. Shipway, on why this was brought forward, you said it was a house cleaning item. What are the changes that have been made, if any, that are substantial or pertinent to the council today?
Certainly, previously, we are directed to update the accountability and transparency bylaws. The sale and disposition of land bylaw was updated with general best practices and a legal review. Subsequently, the public notice bylaw following the Heritage Conservation District and the water waste water rate updates was also reviewed. There's some legislative updates in regards to what the reference, the legislative, legislation that's being referenced there. And we attempted to improve the readability of the bylaw to make it very clear for all those parties involved. And there's no real substantial changes to the policy or to the bylaw in itself.
Counselor Halpin?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to comment that if we insist that there needs to be provision given for any time that there's a problem on the website, that's going to create a situation where every time that it's down for even a few minutes, we have to have a log that records when that happened for long, how long that happened, what the outcome is from that. And that any time that a person fails to access the website from their home, we're going to have to stop and go through it with IT and determine whether that fault is on our end or on theirs. And that would probably create undue hardship.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. What would, how would this be affected during the recent IT issue where there wasn't access for a month? Would this be, do you want to comment on that for us, please, Mr. Shipway?
To you, Mayor Sloan, our website was not inaccessible for a month, but obviously if the website was down for any extended period of time greater than 24 hours, we would either restart or provide that information and extend the notice period. It's really just there for, for nominal incidents.
Thank you. How long was the email down in 2022, Mr. Shipway?
The website or the email?
Both.
Our, our website was not down. Email had intermittent, intermittent connectivity issues, however, our system buffers so that we receive all emails during that time.
You were able to receive all emails and reply to them for all, during all of 2022?
To you, Mayor Sloan, the email buffers, so as long as it isn't down for longer than it buffers, yes, we're able to respond.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I thought there was a, a, quite a large concerning IT issue that we had, at least I read about in the paper. And when emails that I was sending and I couldn't get back, maybe that was with the county. I just want to confirm that it wasn't with Central Elgin.
No, we did have a cyber incident where we were impacted with email. But our email is set to buffer, so we don't have that issue.
Counselor Graham?
Yeah, I, I think that again, that, I mean, I'm not talking about 20 minutes here or there. What that, the impact that's going to have, but if our website is down for a day and we're only giving people, you know, seven to 14 days notice or that, that amount of time should be added on to the amount of notice. So even if we put in the bylaw that it's 24 hours or more in case there is a cyber event.
Thank you. Do any other counselors have any comments on this? Deputy Mayor Noble, please. Okay, Counselor Graham, thoughts?
I'd like I'd like to put forward a motion that
Sorry, Counselor Graham, we're having a little bit of communication problems. If you could, if you could speak again, please. Sorry, Mr. Perrin.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So for staff's understanding, there are times that we are required to give notice under the Planning Act. And that notice has certain criteria, whether it be 20 days notice. And if that notice is posted on the public website, say 30 or 35 days, and the website goes down for 24 hours. Are you suggesting that, or is Counselor Graham suggesting then that that 24 hours gets extended on to that notice period that, that was maybe 35 days? Because what that will do, it will have an effect on when council or the Committee of Adjustment could actually hear a planning application. It would go to the next scheduled planning meeting, for example.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin, for the clarification. Are you back with us, Counselor Graham?
Yes, sorry about that. Yes. I think that in, with regards to transparency, which was one of the major issues coming forward to, from the election, that people need to have access to that information. So if there's a time period that is 24 hours or more, that they're not able to access that information, that we extend the amount of time to make sure that it's accessible to the public in the amount of time that they are supposed to be allotted.
To you, Mr. Shipway?
Obviously, whatever direction council provides will execute. I think I'd just like to reiterate that section 2.2 in the new proposed bylaw is verbatim the same as section three in the existing bylaw. And I don't believe it, it's been an issue and just it's, there's no form of notice where website is the only form of notice. If there was, I think staff would have greater concern, but website is an add-on to every single one of the notice provisions. And I just, I think there's some consideration to be made. You know, we put stuff in the CE buzz, so if, you know, something was down for 20 hours, then it's not just extending it 20 hours, it's extending it another week or depending when it is, a week and a half to ensure we can get that in there. So there's wide-ranging ramifications of, of doing that. And again, that's just in there as a fail-safe as one of the methods of notice.
Would it, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, would it not be possible if we're required to give 14 days notice that we ensure that we give, say, 16 days notice or two days before the vote or before it goes in front of council so that even if the website does go down for that one day or two days in the case of a cyber event, that that will have a little bit of a leeway there?
You, Mr. Chair, yes, we do make a concerted effort to always post longer than the, than the time permissible.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. I have a question with respect to the provision regarding. Are there any changes to this? I saw the original one that Mayor Reeve Hoff has had signed, so I know it's being updated. When it, when it talks about the, the clerk versus the clerk and mayor, are there any changes to that that, that are pertinent for the council?
Is, are you asking, I guess, like, I don't know what's pertinent to council, you'd have to tell me what's, is there changes in the operationalization of it? Generally, yes. Section seven of the old one, if matters arise, which in the opinion of the CAO, in consultation with the mayor is considered to be an urgent and time-sensitive nature, which could affect the health and well-being of residents. State emergency is declared, that's section seven in the old one. In the updated one, it's section 5.1 and it's updated to just say CAO clerk. However, our procedures within our emergency management plan and delegated authority bylaw that's been passed contemplate that.
So why wouldn't we just add the CAO, mayor and council where it says to the CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, council passed a comprehensive. Few, Mr. Mayor, council has passed a previous, previously passed a comprehensive delegation of authority bylaw that streamlines a lot of these operational items. So that would be going back on the previous delegation of authority bylaw.
Which one supersedes the other?
The delegation of authority bylaw right now is the one that's clear. If there's a greater delegation than the bylaw, with a greater delegation would supersede.
Counselor Halpin?
So I'm just trying to understand how that would play out together. So is that to say then that when possible, there would be consultation? And if it's an emergency and it's not possible to consult, then this bylaw basically gives you permission to make a decision?
No, it's, it's not for consultation, it's for notice. And I just want to be clear, it's for enactment of a fee or charge by law, adoption of the budget, ward boundaries, restructure, shut off of public utility, private note, road naming or highway closing. These are things that if emergency was declared, we would just pause the notice and focus on the emergency. It's, it's, it's really been drafted with best practices to catch all and align with our current operational procedures.
Could you just give me the point there about private road naming and how that, that plays in? I'm not, I'm not following.
Sure. Within the Municipal Act, section 48, it requires that if we are going to change the name of a private road, so a road that's not owned by the municipality, you have to provide notice so that the affected property owners are aware of the same.
Understood. Thanks, Mr. Shipway. Counselor Graham?
Yeah, and I have concerns in, in section five and section eight, both where it says urgent or time-sensitive manner, because I believe, I feel that that onus should be on the mayor and deputy mayor rather than the clerk's decision and as well on section eight under policy management. That the CAO clerk has delegated the authority to make administrative changes, when I do believe that this should be mayor, deputy mayor and/or council as well.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Mr. Shipway?
Again, whatever council decides, we're happy to execute. I think if you're making those changes, there's significant alterations to the delegated authority bylaw that would need to be considered. It's kind of taking a step back from those stream linings that, that have been done, but whatever council directs, we're happy to implement.
I'd like to put that motion out, that I'd like to make that motion that section five and section eight make it so that it is the mayor and/or council's decision for urgent and time-sensitive, the emergency provision and also the policy management.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Can I get a second or? Counselor Watson?
So procedurally, at this time, you're wanting amendments before this bylaw comes back on your agenda?
I think what I'm hearing is that Counselor Graham and others would like to have changes made. I know what we're doing here right now is whether to vote yea or nay on this. But I think we'd like it brought back after review and changes. Is that correct, Counselor Graham?
Yes, or vote on it currently, making motions or vote on it currently that that wording is going to be changed from the clerk's decision to the mayor and/or council decision in both section five and section eight.
Counselor Halpin?
Would it be useful, it sounds as though if we were to make these changes, then that means revisiting the entire delegation stream procedure that's already been voted on. Would it not be useful then for us to simply defer this and actually receive copies of and examine that delegation stream before we do this?
Counselor Graham, your thoughts, please?
I don't see the need for that. I think it's very clear what this is stating. So I don't think that we need to go back and review all that. I think it's up to council who's sitting right now that we take a look at or that all of us vote on, that it should be the mayor's decision or, and/or council's decision within the emergency provision and within policy management.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin?
Thank you. It's not that I mean that we can't act differently to what past councils have. My intention here is more that if what we're doing is voting for things that will create conflict between different policies and mean going back and redoing anyway, then it might be useful for us to go through that pre-existing policy and decide whether it's to our satisfaction and whether we feel that it's already addressing these issues. Because if it does already address this in a way that makes us feel comfortable, then we're ultimately creating more work and more literature when we could work and move forward.
Counselor Graham, comments?
I think that if we change the wording to make the mayor and the council responsible for the emergency provision and the policy management, then staff could just go back and change the wording on the other documents that it may affect.
Mr. Shipway?
To you, Mr. Mayor, staff don't have the authority just to change bylaws, so if what I'm picking up here is that council would like to be more involved in the operational components. I think you should definitely review the delegation of authority bylaws. It contains significant amounts of things much greater than what are contemplated in this report. So even if you change this bylaw, there's still, you know, 80-plus delegations of authority that are in force and effect. And just given the general nature of the discussion, I think it's things you'd be interested in.
Counselor Graham?
So I would recommend that we start with this one. And then if we have to go through during our term of four years and go through other delegation of authority, but I believe that these are, because this has come before us this evening, that we might as well tackle this while it's before us and make it so that we ensure that the mayor and council is responsible for emergency provision and policy management decisions.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. I'll ask the clerk, Counselor Graham would like a, if you've got enough information?
Through you, to the rest of council and to Counselor Graham, is it, right now, this is a draft bylaw. So I'm not understanding or I need clarity. If you're looking to have that draft bylaw come back with the amendments to section five and section eight that are being suggested. So again, in essence, are you looking just to defer this report back, make the changes and bring that report back to council?
I think that's exactly what Counselor Graham would like. Counselor Graham?
Agreed.
With that in mind, are we looking to just defer this report noting that you want the amendments to section five and eight?
I'm fine with that, Counselor Graham, yes?
Yes, I agree. Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's one additional section that I wanted to take note, or have people take note of, that no additional notice is required if a subject is deferred or if it's to be discussed at a subsequent council meeting. I think that the public needs to be notified if the decision is going to be deferred. And it needs to be notified of when it's going to come up again, if it is at a subsequent council meeting, again, in the efforts for transparency.
Respectfully, Counselor Graham, we are on live stream, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Shipway on his thoughts on that on us. So, thank you.
What, whatever council would like, again, that was in there operationally, if council was unable to make a decision or something went late and you were going to adjourn or recess until the next day. Removing that provision would mean that notice would have to go out for that, so you'd have the start over of that period again.
Counselor Graham?
I think, no, is there not a, through you, Mr. Mayor, is there not, Mr. Shipway, some type of compromise that we could be noting on the website or on the CE buzz that this subject is going to be deferred until the next meeting or this subject is going to be discussed at a subsequent council meeting?
Mr. Shipway?
To you, Mr. Mayor, the, the CE buzz goes out once every week, so we don't always have the opportunity just to say it's going to be at a, a later point. And again, there's just operational considerations for that. We don't really have exact control of, with all those forms of notice.
Counselor Graham?
Through you again, Mayor Sloan, Mr. Shipway, could we not put it on the website and update the website if a, if a subject or gets deferred into the next meeting?
Mr. Shipway?
If you, Mr. Mayor, council can do whatever it would like, it just has to pass their resolution to do that. I think the one thing you have to be aware of again is that website is just one of the forms of notice that you're contemplating here. So if, if that's the case, you, you'd need to specify that, you know, notwithstanding any other form of notice, this form of notice will suffice in this situation.
Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to comment here that at the last look at our most recent council meeting, we've had 75 views of it on YouTube. And that there are a few key people that tell me that they read the CE buzz every single time. And many, many people tell me that they overlook it. And I would suggest that if we make this a requirement, we're going to make some decisions stall by a week or sometimes more than a week beyond what's necessary to try and get that information out. When the people who are really, really invested in this are the 75 people who will have watched the meeting, watched the thing be deferred and will know that it's happening the next day.
Good points, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Graham?
And I'm, I'm not saying that we need to give, restart, that's what I'm talking about, a compromise through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not talking about giving another 14 days notice. What I'm saying is if a meeting is deferred or if a meeting is going to be discussed or a subject is going to be discussed at a subsequent council meeting, that we put that on the website to let people know that that's going to happen, because I have had multiple complaints where people didn't know that it was deferred and they didn't know when it was on the next agenda. So if we can, again, just give them as much information as we possibly can by possibly updating that website to say we didn't get to this meeting or this, or this subject is going to be deferred to the next meeting. That way they'll know when they, when their issues are coming.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that we can all have a role to play here. And for example, I was happy to post on my social media when we deferred our budget until January. And certainly, we all know who the people most interested in our awards in these topics are. And if we have people watching for specific issues and we're choosing to defer them, we can absolutely take measures as their liaisons to government to make sure that they know what's going on. But it sounds as if what we're proposing is to make a longer and more onerous bylaw that will slow our processes down and make it harder for us to get things done for the community.
Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not requesting that at all. In fact, we're trying to come to a compromise so that the public is well aware of when we're talking about the issues that concern them. Again, I'm not looking for an additional 14 days notice. What we're saying is if we defer a subject from, let's say, today until our next meeting, from, let's say, today until our next meeting, that the CE website be updated tomorrow to say this subject was deferred until the next meeting. I don't think that it's a more onerous situation. I don't think it's going to delay any processes for the website to be updated with that.
Thank you. I have a suggestion through Mr. Shipway, or my request, Counselor Graham, would it be possible to use this as perhaps a trial, the communication of request? I know Mr. Shipway does a apprécie after the fact with what's in the meeting and what's happened. Perhaps you and Mr. Shipway could work on making sure that this is communicated to the right stakeholders. Is that a fair, fair compromise? Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what are we communicating to what stakeholders?
Well, I was just trying to use this as a trial in the sense that Counselor Graham would like to publicize that we're putting something forward that's going to be brought back. You write an effective praisie of our meetings. Perhaps this could be included. I ask for your counsel on how we could assuage Counselor Graham in her interests.
Just to confirm, the bylaw doesn't deal with anything that's contemplated, like, doesn't deal with notice for anything contemplated at this meeting? You're just asking generally, outside of this report, forget this, that if something's deferred on an agenda, that it be included in the, the council highlights?
Yes, I think that for, sorry, Mr. Shipway, I think what Counselor Graham is looking for is is that it not be lost in the shuffle, as it were. Is that correct, Counselor Graham?
That's correct, and that the public be updated accordingly.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, and to the rest of council. Just, for example, if council chooses to defer this report, it will be on the next agenda, and in brackets, it will say deferred from January the ninth. So just so that council is aware, we do make that well-known that it was something that was on a previous agenda, and the direction of the council of the day was to defer.
Important contribution. Thank you for that. I think with a new council, that's the type of information we, we very much appreciate. Deputy Mayor Noble.
I'm just wondering if instead of saying no public notice, best effort for public notice, maybe it's a wording thing that could make that better, possibly?
If I may, I think we're switched now to just the communications of it as opposed to the wording of. Is that correct, Counselor Graham?
Yes, that's my concern, is the communication of it.
Okay, thank you. So to your, to your point, Deputy Mayor Noble, this is just on how it will be communicated going forward as opposed to the exact wording. So Counselor Graham, would you be okay if we, if we went forward? This is, we've, we've, we use this as something of a bit of a trial. We learned some valuable new information tonight. Someone has their speaker on, sorry. And the deputy clerk has given, I think, some, some, some good information about how it's communicated. With your permission, could we go forward using this as a bit of an example, seeing how it does get done? And then maybe using this to, to work towards a best practice in the future?
That sounds fine.
Thank you.
So procedurally, my understanding was that there was a motion put on the floor from Counselor Graham and seconded by Counselor Watson for a deferral. And, and if you will bear with me, I elaborated on that. Draft motion reads that Counselor Graham and Counselor Watson, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report CO 0323, republic notice bylaw, be referred back to staff and that staff be directed to amend Section 5 and 8 to reflect the wording of mayor and council and bring said draft bylaw back to council for consideration.
Yes. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Shipway.
So just for clarity, though, that doesn't amend Section 4, which is the no-notice provision.
Explain, please, Mr. Shipway.
The Section 4 of the policy reads that no public's notice shall be required under provisions of this bylaw where council is authorized by the municipal act to consider a matter in a meeting close to the public, sorry, and 4.1 says if it's considered at a subsequent meeting, no additional public notice shall be required. That remains unchanged.
Counselor Graham.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Wilson or Mr. Shipway. When they're talking about additional notice, are you talking about like an additional fourteen or seven days' notice, or are you talking about, as Diane had said, that it's just put up on the, the additional, or up on the next agenda?
Through you, you, Mr. Mayor, this bylaw is talking about those specific, specific instances within the appendix, and if additional notice is required, then it would be contemplating doing the notice again. So if it's ten days, ten days. If it's seven, seven, and so on and so forth.
Counselor Graham.
Okay, so it, so if council meetings are fourteen days apart, and a meeting is going, is going to be deferred into a subsequent meeting, there's plenty of time to give additional notice. If it's a seven-day notice or ten-day notice, like you said, Mr. Shipway?
I guess in that, through you, Mr. Chair, I guess in that scenario, if you're holding a special meeting or anything else, that's where issues arise.
Counselor Graham.
Sure, I'm under, I didn't understand what you meant by that, Mr. Shipway. You had said that seven days or ten days' notice, and, and what I'm saying is if council, if a subject is deferred to the next subsequent council meeting, that's fourteen days apart, so there'd be plenty of time to give additional seven or ten-day notice within that.
Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. However, when things are being deferred historically, it, it hasn't always been to the next regular meeting of council. It could be to a special meeting of council or to some other event that occurs sooner than that time period.
Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so if we could send this back to staff with a request for additional wording on 4.1 and 4.2 to include that if it's being deferred to a subsequent meeting, that additional notice go out to it. But, and then have staff come up with a provision for a special meeting. But not necessarily, not necessarily have this applicable if there's a special meeting.
Counselor Halpin.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, does it not sound, sorry, does it not sound at that point as if we are really creating an awful lot of clauses without having yet bothered to read the pre-existing intentions and make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel here and that we're not just needlessly heaping on additional bylaw points?
Mr. Ship, or Counselor Graham, do you want to comment?
I don't think that we're creating additional, I mean, we're creating additional work because we have to give out notice. But if it was my concern and it was deferred, I would want to be notified again. And I know that when you have a delegation that comes before council, Ms. Wilson takes down the names of the people who want to be notified when there's any additional information or changes that come out. So I feel that if it was my issue, I would want to be notified. If the meeting was going to be deferred to a subsequent, and if there's plenty of time, because there's fourteen days between council meetings, notice is seven to ten days. Seems to me like there's enough time that additional notice could go out.
May I ask, is it, excuse me, or sorry, pardon me. Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Mr. Chair, sorry. Just to be clear, that's not a situation that's contemplated by this bylaw, like someone coming as a delegation and it being referred to a later date is not something that's contemplated by this bylaw. This is just for a few statutory requirements within the municipal act. If after council provides direction on this bylaw, you know, we would like to have further discussion about if items are deferred. Generally, if it's specific to a certain person, we, we do provide follow-up to them, but that situation isn't what this bylaw contemplates.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add, Ms. Wilson?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Grant, Graham, there's, there's kind of some wording that's been put forward about having this reviewed and, and returned to the council. What, what say you that we use that time to have maybe a either you and, and the clerk and deputy clerk and myself have a discussion about this in a more wholesome manner? Would that be something you'd consider?
Yes, that's fine.
If you could, Ms. Wilson, read the, sorry, we're at the point, we're going for the.
So I had prepared the draft motion and read it. I can read it again. Moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report CO 323, republic bylaw, sorry, public notice bylaw be received, sorry, be referred back to staff and that staff be directed to amend Section 5 and 8 to reflect wording mayor and council and bring said draft bylaw back to council for consideration. Is that the consensus of council at this time?
Yes. Do I need to move her in a second? Will you, is it called vote? Because if there, could you call the vote, please, Ms. Wilson?
Yes. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin? Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachmann?
No.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We now have on the agenda an item from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services pertaining to Edward Street and the right-of-way stairs. Mr. Brooks, would you like to, to comment on this for us?
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I did speak with a neighbor today who expressed her displeasure at the suggestion, and she was very hopeful that we would delay this and have a town hall-style conversation, as is done for things like rezonings on Hill Street. After looking into this more, I find that in the natural flow of the motion that we're approving here to have this, to have this explored, there would then be consultation with the community. So it sounds as though what she's asking for is effectively already being met. So I'm not going to suggest that we have another sort of meeting with the public prior to that. But she did also note that she has contacted all members of council and that she does think that it would be germane to our decision-making to see her property and the area. And so on her behalf, I do encourage everyone here, if you have the time and availability, to make that contact with her and see her property so that you have a better firsthand understanding of the reasons that she's unhappy with this.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Other counselors. Counselor Graham.
Yes, I think that we do need to have a general public meeting for this. Again, we were elected on these exact issues that people need to be heard, that we need to come to try and find some type of compromise. So I do think we need to have a public meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. I'm going to ask here, oh, go ahead, Counselor, sorry. Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so as I was saying, this person had hoped for us to have a public review prior to hiring a consultant, but I see that in the natural flow of this procedure, after a consultant is hired, then what they're proposing is given to the public, and we can have a more fulsome public review where they have more specific detail in hand. So I'm hopeful that that will satisfy this individual neighbor as well as all of our procedural needs.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that before we hire and spend more of our taxpayers' money, that we should be taking a closer look at this and hearing all sides from from the concerned public as well.
This was an item that was, came before us. It would be helpful. I just, I, 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 I have a quick question. I'm going to ask the clerk. Thank you for the sidebar. I just wanted to make sure that the information that I had was relevant and precise and in the public purview. Counselor Halpin, your suggestion is?
Thank you. Well, my motion in this case would be that we do retain the consultant so that then we can get some pertinent information to give to those in agreement and disagreement, and they can act based on actual concrete suggestion.
Thank you. Did this council not already make a decision on this matter? Could someone? Mr. Brooks, Mr. Perrin, Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, there's, it's been an ongoing matter since all the way back to 2018 with both public and in-camera considerations. At this point in time, the reason this report came forward is because the hearing application concluded and title of the property vested within the municipality subsequently to commence that process, the municipality council provided direction that there would be consideration of construction of a staircase within there, and you know, the reason it's drafted this way is that so that staff would retain geotechnical and design, so we understand what that looks like within that right-of-way and where it would be placed in the optimal, and then it would come back to council for council review and consideration. And at that time, we're recommending posting on Let's Talk, but if council would, would want at that time, you could obviously provide direction for a meeting with notice to abutting property owners or something to that effect. But at this point, it's really just following the procedure of what started back in 2018.
So if you could help me understand, we would hire someone that would tell us what stairs we could build. We would then have a meeting telling people what the stairs look like. We would then have the council decide whether the stairs would be built. Is that correct?
Generally, yes. We need to retain geo, geotechnical and, and engineer to ensure that we comply with all regulations and that they're built appropriately.
And those costs to do that, could, has, has anyone have any sort of a, I mean, I see the total cost here for a stairway, but the total cost for the geotechnical, which we would start with? I, I guess my point is, is that regardless of the geotechnical, why wouldn't we have the community meeting before we went forward to find out the geotechnicals of the building, right? Am I making sense here? I don't know if I am. Could someone else help me?
Yes.
Can I ask? Sorry, is that Counselor Graham?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a, we have something that's been brought forward. I live down the street. Everyone knows that. So if we invested into geotechnicals, we then found out what we could do. We would then get into, oh, design this, design that. How many steps, big, small, up, down? And at that point, we would have a meeting, which I, I don't think is, is what we want to do. We need to decide whether we're going to do it. And if this public meeting is required, is necessary, and something that Counselor Halpin and, and other counselors want to have, then let's have the meeting. But am I wrong here to think that we don't, we can do it before we get geotechnical? And, and could, Mr. Brooks, what are your thoughts on that?
Council could certainly move forward and have the community meeting before the detailed design was completed. The detailed design will help with what this, the structure of the stairs will actually look like, the length, the width, the working area beside the stairs. It's a fairly narrow right-of-way and through there, so it'll answer a few questions that we may not be able to answer at the public meeting. But it's, that's council's wish.
Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And just, I think it's important to remind, like, obviously, whatever council directs, however, the history on this matter is that council provided direction and advised the court that if the ownership was granted, it would accept and assume ownership of jurisdiction over the required lands and thereafter proceed to prepare specific plans for the design, construction, maintenance, and repair proposed Edward Street staircases. So that was within the, the application hearing and the, and the consideration is that council, previous council, but council has committed to a certain process at this point in time, and that's why this report is here.
Thank you. I understand. Counselor Graham, do you have any comments? Thank you. I understand. Counselor Graham, do you have any comments? I know you've spoken with, uh?
I do. I think that, uh, and again, I'm not saying that we're not going to follow through that, with that procedure, but I think that we can have a meeting with the people that are going to be affected, what, so that we can hear their concerns and try to come to some compromise so that they feel comfortable moving forward, we feel comfortable moving forward, and then we can take a look at the cost for geotechnical, make sure that this is affordable for us as well when we're trying to, uh, when we're going to be looking at the budget very soon.
Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through you. Um, I very much agree that we need to have this conversation with the community as a whole. Uh, my thought was simply that as far as I can tell from our report and the history here, we have made a commitment to the Superior Court that we are going to get a consultant and explore this. And if we absolutely have committed that we're going to do that, and that's a thing that we must follow through on, then I think that by doing that before we have this conversation with the community, we have more information to put into their hands and more for them to work with that's sure and useful. So by doing it in that order, we could make sure that we have something more tangible to provide.
I appreciate your point of view, Counselor Halpin, and for raising those points. Counselor?
Through you. Oh, go ahead.
Nope, sorry. Counselor Bachman, I apologize.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just to build upon, uh, Counsel Halpin's point. Past experience would be that you have to start with a design. You got to start with a plan. You got to start with an idea. And I don't think anybody can have an idea explained to them. Theoretically, I think we have to start with a plan. I think we, we've gone through the, the legal aspects to get the land. And according to the report, the next step is the design process. I don't see anything wrong with having a design done so that we can look at it and at least be able to argue the merits of having it or not having it based on the design of an engineer.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Counselor, um, Halpin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to add to that, that while there is this obligation on our part where, uh, the prior council committed that we were going to go through this consultation and where I would like us to make sure that we have as much information as possible to give to the public that's real and concrete. That's not to say that we do, i- if this turns out that we do this consultation and it's going to be more than the waterfront budget to do this, we don't have to follow through if it would destroy our community. Um, like, we can, in fact, get a consultant, talk with the public, and then if there's undue burden and it's really going to be a problem for the community, we can stop there. So at least by doing this and having useful information to provide, it's not all guesswork and hearsay.
Thank you very much. Quick question to Mr. Perrin or, um, sorry, Mr. Brooks, when you say, when it says consultant, it's, it's, is it, we talk about geotechnical or is it consultant with respect to design? Is it all in the same? Could you just give, help me understand a little bit, please?
Uh, we would likely start with a geotechnical consultant to, uh, do boreholes on the, uh, side of the hill where the stairs would be constructed and, uh, proceed with that geotechnical consultant if they had the proper structural engineer available on staff to, come up with a design. If that geotechnical consultant doesn't have that structural engineer, they may need to sub out a structural, engineer to complete, um, a design.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, is it possible that we get some quotes on how much the consultant and the geotechnical is going to be costing us prior to engaging them?
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, typically, the process for this type of project, uh, would be that staff would undertake three quotes and go with the cheapest quote to complete the work. Uh, the procurement policy, I do believe, um, would delegate staffs the ability to hire that consultant. But as per the procurement policy, three quotes would be required.
Mr. Shipway, did you want to comment, sir?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to confirm the procurement bylaw would stipulate that if it was above fifty thousand, it would come back to council below the, uh, Mr. Brooks outlined the process.
Mr. No, uh, Deputy Mayor Noble?
I, I think the, the process has kind of already been started and we're, we're trying to maneuver within what's, what's there. And ideally, it'd be nice to have the, the public forum meeting and go forward with that. And I understand councils, I, concept of not spending a lot of money before we have a meeting. I don't know if we can put a cap on, I know the, before it comes back to council, we're fifty thousand. I don't know what council thinks they're willing to put towards a geo, uh, technical, um, stamp or, or looking into this project. I don't know if they want to put a cap on what we're willing to spend, but we did commit to doing that sort of per portion, and we're kind of back-ending this whole thing without having a public meeting because of the way this came about and, and, and happened. So I, I think we have a couple of parties that we have to satisfy. And maybe we can somehow negotiate it so we don't, um, spend over a certain amount of money doing that, that geo, what's my word? Uh, geotechnical. Um, and I don't know if Mr. Shipway can help us with a cap on that cost or if the cap is fifty before it comes back to council. Just my thought.
Mr. Shipway?
Yeah, the procurement bylaw would dictate on this at this point in time, uh, unless alternative directions provided.
Well, we have a recommendation. Sorry, Counselor Watson?
Uh, yeah, there's a lot going on here. We're kind of in a rock and a hard place because there's one group, they're going to sue us if we don't put it up, and the other group's going to be really mad at us if we don't put it up. Like, could we, and I'll be ahead of this damn thing. I'll go down to Port Stanley and we'll have a town hall vote. And whoever, like, if you get the most votes, we'll put it up. But if you don't get enough votes, you got to sell it somehow to try and get it. Like, can't we make this a little bit simpler? Thanks.
I appreciate the initiative, as I think we all do, Counselor Watson. I, I wonder, though, that the, the train may have left the station already. If that's, if that's fair to say, folks, I, I, I'm, I'm pleased to, to, to take the consideration, but we might be too far down the road. Is that, uh, uh, thoughts from anyone else?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I just think we need to take a, look at the consideration for this since it's going to be, you know, depending, again, I would like to see the geotechnical quotes prior to, um, moving forward with it because if it is going to be fifty thousand dollars, you know, that's going to take us up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a set of stairs. Right? Because we're, we already have allotted a hundred and twenty-five for the construction of the walkway.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since we're going to go the, uh, street shooting wave as Mr. Counsel, or as Counselor Watson did and say that there is concern about whether people will want to litigate over this, I would suggest that probably the cost of getting this consultation is less than the cost of deliberately incurring legal action.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin, for your comment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be careful. I mean, this is, you know, in the two meetings that I've attended since I've been elected, this is the second time, uh, that we're talking about the fear of being litigated against. Uh, I want to make sure that as a council, we move forward without making fear-based decisions so that we're not making a decision based on if we may get litigated. Again.
Thank you, Counsel Graham. I appreciate that. Uh, I'm going to, uh, first of all, uh, Counselor Halpin, you go ahead, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't think that this is a matter of creating hypotheticals about what could be in some distant future. I think this is a matter of looking at this report and saying, we faced the Ontario Superior Court and made a commitment that if this land was conferred to us, that we were going to follow through with certain actions after that had occurred. And so this is a very specific concrete instance where a commitment was made and there is a line of we have or we have not followed through on our end. And while I think there's a, a great number of us here at this table that may or may not agree with that commitment having been made in the first place, the reality is that it is a binding commitment and it was made. And so this isn't just what if twenty years from now a litigation occurred? This is a thing has been promised, the thing has been enacted, and we have to decide whether we are or are not willing to defy what we've committed to the Superior Court.
Some excellent points, and thank you, Counselor Halpin. Um, Counselor Graham? I'm, I'm looking here and, and wondering about having Ms. Wilson, um, uh, read, uh, the motion. Um, are you okay with that or do you have any other comments?
Uh, the only other comment I, I would say is that I think possibly we need to consult with legal on this because if it does come to the point where this is going to be too expensive and we are trying to be fiscally responsible as a council, we need to vote on that. So if that is the case, perhaps, Mr. Shipway, um, we could consult with legal counsel to see what our avenues are if we do deem that it's too expensive to be undertaken.
In, in defense of, uh, of the staff administration, I'm sure they've already have a, have gone that, have, as lawyers have already been involved, but I'll let Mr. Shipway speak to it.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely correct. The legal was involved, uh, and reviewed the entirety of this report.
You okay with that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Shipway, did they say what potentially could happen if we were to come back that the, the building of these stairs is too expensive?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's not what this report is about. This report is about procedurally moving forward with a process. Uh, it specifically says, um, that you're, you're not committing to build the stairs, uh, or the location of the stairs. You're going forward with the design of the stairs. I, I think out of, you know, after, if you've tendered this, if you go through the process that's been committed to and the stairs come in an exorbitant amount, that would be a question for a different report, but that's not what's contemplated by this report.
I agree, and thank you, Mr. Shipway. Counselor Graham, again, I'm, 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 I'm looking for some, some direction, but I think we're pretty close here on this side to having, uh, Ms. Wilson, um, um, read for us. Uh, are you okay with that?
Uh, if it, does it include a public meeting? The motion itself?
So, um, first of all, why don't we do this? Why don't I have you read the motion so that we can go through that? And Counselor Graham, you can listen in.
The draft motion reads that report I C S O one twenty-three, we Edward Street right-of-way stairs be received for info- information and that council directs staff to retain a consultant to complete engineering design of the stairs with funding from the Working Capital Reserve and that the design of the stairs be presented to council and subsequently to the public for review and comment.
So Counselor Graham, yes, it does.
Okay.
On that note, I'm going to ask for a mover. Counselor Watson, seconder. Counselor Halpin?
Would you like that read again or just call the vote, Mr. Mayor?
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Carries.
Uh, and our next item on the agenda, Ms. Wilson, Director of Financial Services, Treasurer, DFS one, request for tenders two thousand and twenty-two, twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three for the front street slope stabilization, stabilization. And who will be speaking to this, please? Excuse me? Oh, Mr. Brooks is speaking to this.
Uh, so I have nothing further to add to the report, but happy to answer any questions that, uh, council may have.
Counselor Graham?
I do have some questions on this. So I thought that this was, uh, approved by a previous council and was in their budget. So I'm concerned that thirty-eight or three-point-eight million is going to come out of our budget.
In the two thousand twenty-two budget, two million dollars was, uh, budgeted for and reserved for this project to be constructed in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the remainder, uh, of the project would be funded, uh, through two thousand twenty-three budget.
So, Mr. Brooks, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to Mr. Brooks, uh, so the previous council said that they were going to pay two million of it, but they would leave it until the following year budget for the three-point-eight million. Because it was my understanding, I thought that council had approved it based on their budget and not a future budget.
Thank you, Count, uh, Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yeah, council and the budget approved, as Mr. Brooks said, a two thousand twenty-two allocation, and then in two thousand twenty-three, there was originally four-point-five contemplated with an additional, uh, two-point-five from the levy, uh, that was in the two thousand twenty-two budget reflected in two thousand twenty-three, uh, with, uh, inflationary increases in the project in, in the two thousand twenty-three budget that's been posted this year. It's contemplated at three million. So it was deferred to put it over two years because of the significant cost of the project.
Thank you. Um, can I ask someone here, or maybe Mr. Shipway, why this isn't in our budget discussions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it is in the budget discussions because this was a multi-year item. The, the RF, or the R F T was prepared and issued again in an attempt to get the best possible price. Uh, it's tendered early as this is a significant project, um, and, and to ensure that it could be, uh, completed within, uh, the calendar year substantially. So, uh, it was issued and now to, uh, to move forward with that, we're looking to, uh, award that.
If we wish to continue with this, if we wish to move forward, correct?
Everything is always at council's discretion or just, there wasn't, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. There, there was an E A on this and i- it's been an ongoing project for sure.
Thank you very much. Um, Counselor Graham?
Concerned at the cost. I'm concerned that it's coming out of our budget and wasn't budgeted for, by the previous council in their year.
Counselor Halpin?
Uh, thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have been in several times to nitpick over the budget already because I know that we do have that coming up. And, um, my understanding of this, and I hope the Mr. Shipway will correct me if I'm mistaken, is that, uh, this particular piece does have some grant money attached to it and is better to be done now while there's the possibility of that than not followed through on. And, uh, I did ask some questions about possibly deferring it, and I think that if we were to ask Mr. Perrin and Mr. Brooks, they might be able to tell you more than I can. But my impression was that we really cannot delay this work any longer without causing potential harm to Front Street.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. I asked at the start if there were any comments that they wished to make and they didn't. Is that still the case? About this, because I, I, I think for five million dollars, maybe we could have just a little more discussion on this. If not, I'm going to defer it. So we can decide that. Did someone want to speak in it or do you want me to defer this?
I, I, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's like, in, in two thousand twenty-two, um, it was decided upon at budget that this project would be split into two years because the amount of the project would have decimated the rest of the capital, uh, projects in two thousand twenty-two. So that's why that money, the two million dollars was reserved in two thousand twenty-two, fully expecting that the remainder would be funded through the two thousand twenty-three budget. That's all, that had been the plan. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, we did approach, um, our geotechnical consultant to review the site and ask if it could be deferred one year, and they said, yeah, there shouldn't be an issue with it being deferred, uh, another year. However, at this point, staff would recommend that we do move forward with this project based on the condition of the site. Um, at any time, we, we could lose more land up on Front Street and we'd rather go in with a plan rather than, you know, have to, um, address this issue in an emergency, um, sense if, if more erosion does occur.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. I fi- I would find it helpful in a situation like this when the council's being asked to spend five million dollars and we've, we're on our third meeting to have reports from engineers to perhaps have someone come in and explain this to us. Because quite frankly, I know you've had to put off some capital spending before when your, things like COVID arose. And I just don't feel comfortable, um, voting on something of this nature. But I'll open up to my colleagues because they may have other thoughts. Counsel, uh, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, my question was with, with there being a potential downturn in the economy, is there an option? Because when this was budgeted, it was, um, it was budgeted when, you know, manpower was, was very scarce, uh, and the, the building boom was really happening. Things have slowed down quite a bit. Uh, my question is if we were to. Uh, my question is if we were to uh, re uh, re-tender it, that uh, maybe that price would come down. And I I understand that you you pushed it back a year. I don't know if there's there's a benefit depending on how the economy acts. If if there's an opportunity for us to save some money, I I have mentioned it a a little bit and and I get a couple of different answers, but um, we do trust your guidance.
Thank you, um, Deputy Mayor Noble. Counselor Graham?
I agree. I think that um, I agree with Deputy Mayor Noble. I think, you know, the cost is, it was at the high time and um, I don't see any difficulty with putting it out for tender again because it does seem like a lot of money. My second question as well would be to um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Shipway, if if there was any uh reserve left over in the twenty twenty-two budget to assist with the three point eight million that's supposed to be coming out of our twenty twenty-three budget for this.
Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we won't have year-end surplus calculated for a number of months now, if if any. Uh, and again, I just last year it was uh like within thousands of dollars. So I don't know that it would be something substantial. Um, it, if I could just speak generally to to what Mr. Brooks mentioned, uh, when reports are here, generally, we leave it to the report to do the speaking. That's why staff will often say, at this point, we have nothing to add. If you have any questions, please let us know. And then if you have specific questions that aren't answered within the report, because the report is the best information we can put forward, we're we're happy to answer those as the discussion goes forward. Um, procedurally, for for us, this is something that started with NEA. Uh, it's moved forward, detailed design has been done. Now it's before council. This is a generally uh just a a procurement report. That's why it's presented uh in this manner. And if you have additional information you'd like, uh, please let us know. But I think staff uniformly believe at this point in time, uh, this is our best opportunity and and re-tendering or deferring uh could have potential negative ramifications uh on our reputation in regards to the the vendors put significant efforts into uh putting together their bids to put forward here. And we want to have bidders for our projects.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Shipway. What percentage of our capital for twenty twenty-three capital spending does this amount to or is it count for? Uh, Counselor Connors?
Through you, Mayor. Um, we reserve two million of this already. Uh, there seems to be a contingency fund of four hundred thousand dollars. And is there any direction on the million dollars that was applied for as far as a grant goes yet?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that we won't get an answer on that till spring, summer, so May, June. At, and then may I answer your other questions, Mr. Mayor? Uh, at the, at this point in time, the draft capital budget uh has a total levy of the three point one nine one uh million and uh, excuse me, Front Street uh contemplates two point uh one million from levy.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. So this is fifty percent of all of our capital spending. And and I must let the record be clear here that I'm far less concerned with the people that put in the tenders um than I am with the people that are paying the bill. So that's one of the reasons that I I I think we need to reassess here what's going on. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Noble brought up a comment about how he thought that there were uh opportunities for savings. I don't, if we had an engineer here tonight telling me that this had to be done by a certain time, that would be one thing. But we don't have that person here tonight. Counselor Graham?
I agree completely through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need each to try and get our costs down, be more responsible with our fiscal spending here.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it's important for us to understand the context here and that um, this number looks very large absent the rest of our budget. Um, but there was more report about Front Street in our budget and the intention had been for us to do the budget on December thirteenth. So I believe that probably it was the hope of staff that we were going to come in already very well armed and versed on this topic. And having already talked about other numbers very similar in proportion to it. And so, yes, compared to, say, the cost of getting a quote for a set of stairs, this is huge. But ultimately, it's something that is sort of and it it's an oversight in the fact that we've delayed our budget and something where we're not talking about frivolous spending on uh fun new things on the beach. We're talking about something where there's belief that there may be harm to the slope and to the road if it's not done.
And I and I'm not, I'm not saying that that isn't the case, but I I would really like to hear from a PN who could tell me if it has to be done in six months or two years. They've been working on it and it was deferred once. Now, again, that's changed. So it went from one year to the second year. Would it be such a stretch to think it might go to the third? Um, hmm, I I don't know. So I I, there's two things to look at here. One, I don't think it's had a wholesome discussion. I don't think the debate has been enough when the majority, the lion's share of the capital plan for next year comes down to Mr. Dooling's report on what we should do with the fact that the tenders were put through. Okay, so firstly, I don't think that if this goes through, if we, if you want to call the vote, we can call the vote. But I don't think this should be um, that we should be looking at this without more uh comprehensive information, some background on it that we're given so that it comes down to something which is literally given. We have five million in one category and we have a hundred thousand for a steps in another. So there has to be more due diligence done with these. We're a new council. And Counselor Halpin, we were a new council, and that's one of the reasons we're going through the budget. And I think it's important. Electoral system made it such that we took on a responsibility. And the responsibility that I signed up for was to do my due diligence. And I I I I will continue to do that. And I think this is the first opportunity where we have something where, you know, that requires some sober second thought. And I would love for my my colleagues here to jump in because I I don't mean to be taking the floor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Nor, uh, Counselor Watson and then Counselor Graham.
Okay. When these guys go and do this tender, that's a, do they, the consultant, does he kind of tell them, uh, I guess what they need or where they should price this, these jobs at? Because you got these four contractors here, and I know two of them are related to one another, and the other guy knows them real well. Do you ever think there's some cahoots in some of these guys? And they're all um within a hundred thousand dollars of one another. So ah, I think we could do much better. Another question, what about our local guys? Maybe they can't do this scope of work. But I know next year or this year, they would really love to do it because they don't have any work right now, and I know that for a fact. Um, so, uh, yeah, maybe I I have my uh hands in the dirt a little bit more than most people, but uh, that's what I see right now. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. Counselor Connors and then Counselor, sorry, Counselor Graham, then Counselor Connors, please.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, I was going to say the exact same thing that Counselor Wa- uh, Watson said that it seems a little suspicious that they're only a hundred thousand dollars apart. Um, so I, again, I think that we need to send them out for a new bid and follow what uh Counselor Watson is saying and defer this and have much more information on it.
Thank you, Counselor Connors, please.
I think that uh Deputy Mayor Noble brings up a good point with um with how hungry people are when it comes to tendering um two years ago versus last year, even versus this year. And I, and I do believe that if you go out for tender, you may get different participants and it may be more competitive pricing. Um, you know, being a consultant, I see prices come in all the time and they're not usually that close based on five million dollars. So uh, I don't know, but I think that uh, I think that it's a good policy to go back out, re-tender. The reason I say that is because you already alluded to it, Mr. Mayor, fifty percent of our budget is is taken up with this particular project. And I don't mean to bring this up again, but I heard an awful lot about Port Stanley when I was walking around talking to people and how Port Stanley was getting everything. So we are responsible for it. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. We need to look into this a little further and have some more professional opinions before we make a decision.
Thank you. Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so through you, I was very interested in what Mr. Watson had to say, and I wonder if staff could comment on uh, whether they received any tenders from anyone closer to home than this and also on what the date of this tender was so that we can better understand since there are people suggesting having it redone uh a better date.
Mr. Shipway?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, this was just issued, the tender closed on December fifteenth. So i- it was just issued now. And I think uh unless there's some sort of substantial change to the tender re-tendering, it just kind of looks like bid shopping. So it was tendered in open and procure, uh, open and fair, transparent manner. There was a significant number of document takers. And ultimately, these these bidders are the ones that submitted.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. So to clarify, although there may be people capable of the work that are closer to home, none of them ended up submitting tenders?
Yes.
Oh, or Mr. Perrin and Mr. Brooks?
Um, maybe just to elaborate elaborate on a couple of points uh through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that the municipality utilizes biz and tenders. So it's it's a digital tendering process. It's not even in the local newspaper like we used to do it thirty years ago. So that that uh, that bid is open virtually Canada-wide. Any contractor can can bid on it. To be honest with you, this is a really nasty job. I've been doing this work for a long time. I can tell you, I'm glad I'm not looking after this project. And the reason it's a nasty job is there's one way in and one way out. And you're going to dig up the one way in and try to get in there and try to get out. It's not like it's in a block where you can get at it from both ends. So that's going to impact cost. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noble raises a very good point about, you know, what's going to happen if we tender it a year from now? In fairness, I don't think anyone can answer that. Because first and foremost, construction is based purely on, I'm going to say ninety percent on one commodity, and that commodity is the energy sector. So if anyone can tell me what the price of a barrel of oil is going to be a year from now, then we might be able to bet better answer that. Because when you look at construction, petroleum governs every little bit of of uh, uh, you know, equipment that's run on a job. And that's not just on the job, but that's equipment that's in a in a gravel pit to mine the gravel out, crush it, truck it to site. The cost of pipe, PVC pipe to put in, we seen over COVID that PVC pipe went up substantially just because of the price of of uh of crude oil. And contractors elected to put in concrete pipe versus PVC pipe, knowing that that their actual labor cost went through the roof because it's far more labor intensive to put concrete pipe in the ground than it is to pick up that twenty-long, twenty-foot-long, six-meter-long piece of PVC PVC pipe and roll it into the into the trench. So there's a lot of things at play here. The other question uh that Deputy Mayor Noble raised was with respect to timing. Um, I can tell you typically, uh, the sooner that a municipality can go to tender in the year, the better price you get. And the reason being is all of these contractors or most of them, and most of them now that are bidding on jobs, they're unionized contractors. So they will take and bid that that first contract of the year relatively low with minimal to no profit sometimes, just to get their best unionized employees that they get good production out of. They'll hire them back, get that first one under their belt, and they will make up that ground going forward. So that's the industry. That's how they operate. So there is typically a benefit to a municipality to get out for tender early and get it awarded. Um, if, and and we've seen it ourselves where, for whatever reason, a project gets delayed uh and you tender late, the price goes up from what you originally intended. And the other thing that's having an impact right now is we don't know what the industry is going to do as far as pricing. I can tell you, it isn't going down. Um, so, you know, those are just a a few points for council to consider.
Thank you. Counselor Graham?
I think at this point, um, taking into consideration what Deputy Mayor Noble has said, what uh Counselor Watson has said, I would like to make a motion that we defer this until we have a little more information and uh re-tender this.
Thank you. Um, so do you need another, do you need a seconder for that, or how do I do it, Ms. Wilson? Just one, uh, sorry, uh, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Shipway, if we defer this, how long are these quotes good for?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe till March fifteenth is what it says it's open till.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it sounds as though there is some potential negative outcome from deliberately re-tendering and making it clear to the only four people who did choose to respond to this that we do want to price shop it. Um, but people do need more information. So rather than a motion to defer and re-tender, could we make a motion that we would like to have a special meeting or in addition to a meeting to get us more information on this from an expert so that those who are uncomfortable can make a better and more informed decision, but not include in that motion that we'd like to re-tender?
Counselor Graham, please.
Uh, I'd actually like to ask Counselor Watson's opinion on that.
Counselor Watson?
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I like the idea of uh re-tendering. I don't need a special meeting to go through and uh rehash some things again. What other municipalities, they might be doing the same thing that we're trying to do here right now is getting more tenders or different ones. Um, so we're here to be different. We, and we're spending everybody else's money. Uh, let's see what these guys can come up with a number, another number. And uh, i- i- if we do it wrong, well, we we we've learned from our mistake, but that's what I have to say.
Counselor Watson, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Connor, please. Also, Counselor Connor, thank you for your comment about the 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 fairness element. We have to look at different things in our spending, and I thought that was an excellent point. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, um, did the project come in on budget?
When we originally undertook this work back in twenty eighteen, we contemplated, I believe, around three and a half million dollars to complete the work. Um, inflation has hit us pretty hard with our unit prices here and you know, getting back to some of the other points here, you know, how these tenders were so close. It's because they're all pricing the same gravel, the same bin walls, everything from mostly the same suppliers. That's these contractors were hungry. The development has started to dry up a little bit. And I know for a fact at least two of them desperately wanted this job because there isn't as much work out out there right now because of the development dropping off. And by deferring this, it's just for council's consideration, we're going to continue to compete against other municipalities who are putting out this type of work. The contractors are start, are going to start filling up their summers with work that has been booked. We're going to be competing against London's BRT um here over the next several years um in in bidding this type of work. So, you know, it, you might get cheaper, but I know for a fact that uh um, we spoke to at least two of these contractors that really want this work for this next summer.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
So Jeff, um, is everything in this package a must-have? In other words, is there anything that you can maybe go back to the top three bidders and negotiate with in in a sense that you could take things out and 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 provide credits? And Lloyd, to your point, um, it really comes down to backlog and what contractors have bid and what they have in their backlog as to how how greedy or how aggressive they're going to be at at the time of tender, because they're going to know when this is going to fall and they're going to plan the work out to retain their their better people. I agree with that. So is it all must-haves? Like, there's nothing you can take out?
It's, there's nothing in the tender package that uh would really be discretionary. Um, it's, it's all, as per the EA, it's putting in the bin walls and cleaning up the storm drainage to prevent erosion. Um, staff can take another look, uh, certainly to see if there is any discretionary items in there. But the 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 project's pretty straightforward. It's just come in, build the bin walls, clean up the storm drainage, rebuild the road.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just add that if I may, that if it council's uncomfortable, you have budget next week, that uh at the next meeting of council, possibly, we could have our consulting engineer come and and provide the next meeting of council, possibly we could have our consulting engineer come and and provide, you know, reinforce what we're saying, if you'd like to hear it from a different source.
Thanks, Mr. Shipway. Actually, I'm gonna go with Counselor Graham on that. Um, you had called for a motion to 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 re-re-tender, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'd like to go forward with that, please. I think the exact wording was re-tender and more information, so if they can be part and parcel, that's fine, but it came to this meeting, it'll be addressed at this meeting. Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, are we changing anything in the tender or just reissuing the tender?
Counsel. We we heard from Mr. Brooks that staff could look at it, so I guess what I would do is I would suggest that staff take another look as Mr. Brooks suggested, and then we'll re-tender. That's my thoughts. Counselor Connors.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Further to that, I, you know, hearing from a professional on what has to get done and how it has to get done would certainly help us understand the the project.
Excellent point. Thank you. Counselor Watson, did you have a comment or did I just?
Oh, I'd like to agree with that through you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, we're making new work tonight.
No, so procedurally, Mr. Mayor, through the rest of councils, it my understanding that you're receiving this report as information, and then you're providing direction to re-tender?
Mr. Shipway.
So based on what Counselor Connor said, are we bringing back the consultant engineer to speak to council and then re-tendering?
We're re-tendering firstly, and secondly, if more information is required, firstly, we're going to re-tender. We're going to ask staff if there's any ways, as Mr. Brooks said, they could look at it, they can do that. After that, when the re-tender comes in, we will ask before it gets brought back to this committee, for this council. We will have a P N G, we will have people that explain to us exactly what's being done, why it needs to be done, and why fifty percent of our capital budget should go towards it. Counselor Connor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. One last point. I mean, being a contractor in the past, they would come to us with jobs that were over budget. And they would come back to us and say, okay, what can they would go to the general, what can you do? And sometimes they have some pretty good suggestions. I'm not saying that you guys haven't done that. I'm just saying that from my experience, there's a lot of good suggestions out there that can lower cost.
Excellent point again. Thank you, Counselor Connors. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you guys were a hundred percent happy with the way that that was laid out. I'm guessing you were pretty happy with it when it went to 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 um to bid. But maybe this gives you an opportunity to maybe get something changed that you would like to see changed when it's rebid. I I don't know. Um, but at the same time, I wanted to thank Lloyd for his insight to answering my earlier questions. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Noble. Mr. Perrin.
I'm sorry, is Mr. Perrin speaking? I can't hear him.
My apologies.
Uh, thank you.
So Mayor Connor, or sorry, uh through uh Mayor Sloan, Counselor Connor's made a good point about going back to a contractor and see if there's ways that we can reduce costs on our project. That's typically done on a more complex project, like a wastewater treatment plant where you have a number of mechanical systems or electrical or control systems that you can actually save a bit of money on, depend on how you implement the project. This project here, you know, Counselor, or sorry, uh Mr. Brooks uh committed to having another look at it, but it's a fairly rudimentary project. It's digging a hole, putting uh steel bins in bins in and filling it full of rock. Um, so there's, you know, we don't dictate how contractors do the work. That's up to them. They have the expertise, right? They do it every day. But on a project like this, this wouldn't be something that we would typically go back and say, can you do this cheaper, like in a different way? Other than if they come forward and say, and they typically will do that at at the time of tendering is that, you know, you specified this this type of product. There's a new product out or another product that we could save, you know, ten percent on. Will you consider that? But to your point, you're all right. It it is worthwhile to go back to contractors on those more complex projects to say, is there a way to take and trim some money here?
Thank you, Ms. Perrin. Ms. Wilson, are we ready with the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll um read this in draft, and then certainly I would need a second or on it. Um, and then I can make any changes as requested by council. The draft motion reads that report DFS oh one twenty-three re-request for tenders twenty twenty-two nineteen Front Street be received as information, and that staff be directed to re-tender the Front Street Slope project, and that once the project has been re-tendered and a report brought to council, the engineer will be asked to be present at that meeting of council.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any comments from the counselors before I ask for a second or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, if we just change that tender process just a little bit, we could just save face by saying, let's re-tender it because it's changed a bit, just a bit. So we're not totally reneging. So we look o- okay.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Diane, if you indicated um an engineer, I would go a little further, engineer slash consultant, whichever one can bear the best information for us.
Thank you, Counselor Con- Counselor Connor. Counselor Graham, are you okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to suggest that uh probably the people who have put in these tenders have more direct professional experience in this topic than any of us, and I would not want to insult their intelligence or professionalism by thinking that something that's tweaked enough for us as council members is tweaked enough to not insult to them or appear to be reneging to them. Um, I really do think that what Mr. Perrin explained about the difference in bids for things with lots of moving parts versus things where everything is quite static and simple is probably relevant to this conversation, and I would really like for us to have the conversation with the engineer prior to going and potentially uh changing our relationship with the people who have given us tenders at present so that we have a better understanding of those tenders before we make a decision that might move any of them away from us.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Did you, uh, you can a second or for your motion?
Uh, yes, and Mayor Sloan, just for clarity, um Counselor Watson, you wanted the word process?
Yes.
Where would you like that?
Oh, okay. Just that how we were changing the uh tender just a little bit, just so that's why we needed to re-tender?
Tender. Tender is tender. When tender goes out, we call them tenders. We don't call them processes, but for clarity.
Good point. You're okay with the tender and the wording currently?
Yeah.
Thank you. I need a second or please. Counselor Connor. We call the vote, please, Ms. Wilson.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
No.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chief Omerad, we're moving through to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. AMDS zero one two three, December twenty twenty-two, monthly building report. Any comments or questions from council? Number two, twenty twenty-three, sorry, Ms. Wilson, I apologize.
Procedurally, we'll need to.
Um, see no concerns or comments. Could I ask for a mover? Oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor Noble, please, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was just looking at the fees on the on the permits, and this is just a kind of a general question. How are the fees calculated? Just when I looked at the price of the project and then the price of the fees, I was just curi- just a curiosity in case I'm asked.
When when you, if you're trying to compare uh twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two um fees. The the one anomaly here on twenty twenty-two, uh as far as the fees go, is that there was one permit for a multi-residential four-story building in Port Stanley. So the actual permit value substantially based on the value of the construction. So as far as new house construction, it's based on permit value as a percentage through the building bylaw. And those fees are um identified through a consultant's report every five years with a bylaw that gets attached to it based on inflation. So those those fees go up annually based on the construction price index. Does that answer it? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to uh Mr. Perrin, same question about these fees. Uh, there was like some uh project values worth, say, seven hundred thousand dollars, and this my screen won't even even come up. And uh the fee was sixty-three hundred dollars. But then there's another project for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, but its fee was like nineteen thousand dollars. How are, I don't get that. That's on page two of this report, I think. Of the single-house detached uh housings, building permit listing. Page three, sorry, page three. The very first one at the top, project value, seven hundred thousand dollars, and the and the fee is sixty-three hundred. And then you go down and you see one there for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, but it's like nineteen thousand dollars. I don't get how that works. If you could explain that to me. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no problem. I just, i- if you can't understand it, I sure can't, so. Okay. Okay.
Sorry, could I have Mr. Perrin say that I can't hear him?
Yeah, I my apologies, sorry. So the the I would wanna go back and look at that. I I believe that the uh the actual construction value is not correct. Both of those are new homes, uh and at a hundred and fifty-six thousand, that would not be the project value. So if I can go back and look at both of those and then report back, that would be great. All right, thanks. Yeah, I would take three of those today at a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
So, Mr. Perrin, who's getting back to us, Deputy Mayor Noble, please. Thank you. Do I have a second or? Counselor Halpin. We need to call vote.
If I may, Mayor Sloan, I think that that's just verbal direction for Mr. Perrin to to get back to
And I'm fine with that. I didn't mean it to be mandated.
Council with that information, we would just consider the main motion to take the report as information.
Thank you. Now I need a mover. Counselor Watson, and a second or, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report AMDS oh one twenty-three, re-December twenty twenty-two monthly building report be received for information. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Yes. Bylaws, I apologize. I am DS zero two two three, December twenty twenty-two, monthly bylaw report. Comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report AMDS oh two twenty-three, re-December twenty twenty-two monthly bylaw report be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Count. Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
They click off.
Okay, public notice. Oh, sorry. Pardon me, I didn't see it, Ms. Wilson, I apologize. Bylaw number one, bylaw two seven five eight, development agreement, two oh six Union Street, Belmont, looks pretty standard. Uh, any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. May I have a mover? Counselor Halpin and a second or Counsel Bachman? And if I could.
Motion reads, Mr. Mayor, moved by Counsel Halpin, seconded by Counsel Bachman, that bylaw twenty-seven fifty-eight be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Okay, and second motion on the bylaw. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, a mover. Counselor Halpin, second or Counselor Bachman?
Motion reads, Mr. Mayor, moved by Counsel Halpin, seconded by Counsel Bachman, that bylaw twenty-seven fifty-eight be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, public notice. Um, is this something we read or how does this usually go? Sorry, the motions and notice and emotion are after, so moving right along from public nos- notice, uh which I thought was the motions and notice of motion. So with respect to our primary water board appointments, um this information is here. Do we need to do anything, Ms. Wilson, on that on that piece?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is before council, uh just identifying who will be the alternate and who will be the voting member for the each year each year.
Thank you. Do we need to vote, Ms. Wilson? Okay. Mover. Counselor Connor, second or? Counselor Bachman?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counsel Connor, seconded by Counsel Bachman, that the council of the corporation of the municipality central are going to approve the following appointment to the primary water board for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. Ken Loveland, municipality of Dunwich as the voting member for twenty twenty-three, and Norman Watson, municipality central organ and John and John Adjuta, township of South Southold as alternate members. Norman Watson, municipality central organ as the voting member for twenty twenty-four, and Ken Loveland, municipality of Dunwich, and John Azajar, township of Southold as the alternate member. And John Ajizar, township of Southold as the voting member for twenty twenty-five, and Ken Loveland, municipality of Dunwich, and Norman Watson, the municipality of Central Organ as alternate members.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and if you can call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Carries.
Next piece is other business. Do you wish to speak to this ball?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Um, the so Mr. Mayor has requested various amendments to procedural bylaw uh to implement procedures that he would like uh to to do that, there would have to be amendments to the procedural bylaw. I don't have authority just to to make those changes. And correct me if I'm wrong on the overview here, uh adding the National Anthem would be an amendment to section five point one. Did you want paper agenda or is the procedure is good enough?
This is procedures. I want the procedures at every meeting.
Okay. Uh, and then amendments to section three point one one, duties of the mayor, section five point one one. The construction of the agenda, uh right now, the responsibility for construction of the agenda is assigned to the C O clerk and uh Mayor Sloan would like it that the mayor reviews the agenda before it's posted. and Mayor Sloan would like it that the mayor reviews the agenda before it's posted.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Do any of my colleagues have any questions on those three issues? Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Most of those seem pretty clear, but could you please elaborate on the changes to duties of the mayor? Is that just specifically the part where you'd like to reread the agenda, or is there more to it?
Nothing. I'm, 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 I'm not getting a, yes, there is nothing to it other than being able to be more involved in the agenda setting, Counselor Halpin, thank you. I need a mover, if I need a second or, sorry, Count, Deputy Mayor Todd Noble, and seconded by Counselor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, again, I prepared something in draft for council to consider, and you can certainly make changes or give me additional direction. I have it moved by Deputy Mayor Noble and seconded by Counselor Halpin, that council direct staff to make amendments to council's procedural bylaw to the following sections, three point one one and five point one one, duties of the mayor to include more involvement with the construction of the agenda, and section five point one, the inclusion of the National Anthem at each meeting of council.
Counselor Halpin?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Was there not also a point about having a physical copy of the procedures at the meetings? Was that also?
I'll let Mr. Shipway address this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's something we do anyway, so it was more just if the entire agenda had to be paper, but we'll continue doing the procedures.
Compromise, thank you.
Just for clarity, Mayor Sloan, is the anthem at every meeting or procedurally at our second and fourth meetings?
As long as there's a land acknowledgement, there will be an anthem in my, my preference.
Mayor Sloan, I've amended that by saying, at each meeting of council where the land acknowledgement is cited.
Well, let me rephrase. How many, what meetings do you do the land acknowledgement at?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The policy is at regular meetings of council and then at the discretion of the chair.
It'll be the same for the National Anthem, please. Thank you, and sorry to make some extra work.
I've amended that again to say at each meeting of council where the landed acknowledgement is cited and/or at the direction of the chair.
That's fine, thank you.
Call the vote?
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Do I vote, do I vote on this one? It's me? Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, if I could add another point to other business for this evening. I'd like to make a motion that council approve a post person at Glover Park in Port Stanley. Initially, a post person is about four to five feet, just to give counselors a little bit of background knowledge. Four to five feet, we have them placed around town, the B I A replace them or put them around town, different areas, our gardeners, interracial couples, different things. It's just like a cute little thing we do in Port Stanley. Initially, there was one slotted to be at Glover Park through the B I A, but because we didn't have enough money to keep it within budget, we took that one out, but the Swan stepped forward and decided that they were, would pay for that. So they requested that it be put at Glover Park, so we just need council to approve that.
Comments from staff?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is up for council to pass a resolution on.
Mr. Brooks, are you familiar with this?
Somewhat. The B I A did pass, or the municipality undertook the installation of some post people for the B I A. My understanding that was that the specific Swan Service Club post person was not included in that original installation. So we've been corresponding back and forth with Counselor Graham and suggested that a council resolution should be had to install that in that this is a service club that wants to install a post person. There already is a service club sign at that park. It, it's council's decision. I know a lot of times a service club may put in a plaque or something at a park when they've donated money or undertook some fundraising for things at that park. That's why we suggested to Counselor Graham that this should go to council.
Thank you for that, Mr. Brooks. Appreciate the background. Counselor, Counselor Halpin has a comment?
Thank you. I certainly think that it's in keeping with plaques and things, and I have no objection to it on that score, but I would point out that notice of motion would normally be used for something that's a little more urgent than this. And two hours into a meeting, I would really appreciate if in future these things were emailed to staff and made it properly onto the agenda so that we weren't playing this game.
Noted. Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Halpin. We're okay to go forward. Counselor Graham, are you okay with? How, how does the wording go for, for, for Ms., Ms. Wilson, please?
To make a motion to approve the placement of the post person at Glover Park.
Thank you. I'm going to give Ms. Wilson some, some time to put this one together.
Mayor Sloan, for clarification, it is a Swan post person?
Counselor Graham?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble?
I'll second that.
Again, for clarity, is there any cost to this that would be associated with the municipality that you want put in this motion?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
The draft motion, or again, if there's a.
Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. I'm sorry.
Counselor Graham was the mover?
Pardon me.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that council approved the installation of a Swan post person at Glover Park at no cost to the municipality of Central Elgin.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes, thank you. Time to move into closed session? Do I need to vote to move in? I need to vote to move in. Sorry, can I have a mover, Counselor Halpin, second or Deputy Mayor Noble? And we need to call the vote because of Counselor Graham being away? Can I call the vote, please? Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Getting ahead of myself, pardon me.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that council proceed into closed session at nine oh six P M in order to address a matter pertaining to information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or a crown agency of any of them, and a personal matter about identifiable individual, including municipal boards and employees.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Okay. May I ask the clerk, please, to read out our information?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that council adjourned from closed session and returned to open session at nine fifty P M.
I need a mover?
I have the movement in a second here. I noted that. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin, we just need the vote.
If we could call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes. The next closed session item?
Need a mover and a second or, Mayor Sloan?
Need a mover and a second or Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Connor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that closed session item C S one, reactive transportation fund, be received as information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
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 Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Carries.
Next item, please.
Need a mover and a second or?
Counselor Halpin and Deputy Mayor Noble.
So I move that the council approved the appointment of Nizila Adarodi West to represent the municipality of Central Elgin.
I think you'll need a second or? Seeing none? I'm afraid it fails.
I'd like to make the move, motion to have Tom Marks recommended.
Second or? Deputy Mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that closed session item C S two, we Elgin County Land Division Committee be received for information, and that council recommend the appointment of Tom Marks to represent the municipality central on the Elgin County Land Division Committee.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think the last item of agenda is a confirmatory bylaw. And I need a mover and a second or? Counselor Halpin and Counselor Connors, thank you.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw twenty-seven fifty-five be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Carries.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that bylaw twenty-seven fifty-five be read a third time and finally.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Now we just need a mover and a second or for an adjournment? Counselor Bachman and Deputy Mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, January the ninth, twenty twenty-three, be adjourned at nine fifty-five P M. And the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Wednesday, January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
And Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
Motion carries.